Is there any way you dial?
$2,000, $3 dollars was just the mark?
All of the county, the city council, the municipal utilities, your main council, your tenor, and then the Thursday. Call to order, Patrick. Dolly, here. Kavoff, here. Morgan, here. Renslow.
Here.
And I'll call the utility board together, uh, Evie.
Here.
Belvin.
Here.
And here, and Shirley.
Here.
Here.
Okay, I need approval to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Renslow. So by Morgan, how do you vote? Dolly.
Yes.
Ross. Morgan.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
And same for the utility board, uh, Kim.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Shirley.
Yes.
And Craig.
Yes.
Okay, number two, Chip, you got a report?
Alright, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, thanks for taking time for a special meeting tonight. The, uh, the material that's at your seats is also spread on a couple pages handout that's on the red. Uh, what it results from really is the, is the committee from the city council and the utility board has been meeting to try to discuss and work out potential approaches on joint initiatives. And they're overviewed in summary form in the, in the handout, a kind of outline you can see. And then there's also a, kind of a proposed recommendation to proceed with the automated traffic enforcement cameras. That's what's on the screen there that you see on the first page. It's been, you know, talked about a number of times at several joint meetings of the city council and the utility board, as well as the, the committee, the subcommittee, I should say, of the council and the, and board that's been, has been meeting. So it's forward really is a, as an action item to consider. And, um, it's, it's really just laid out as a policy discussion topic that, um, I think has some good merit. And I'll go through those, those items here as well. Uh, focusing on the utility board, there are a couple of different items on the second page that are utility focused. Um, I'll just, I can just highlight what those are in brief form, but I don't have a lot of detail on those. But what we have, what's been laid out, uh, as concepts really were to look at what a number of municipal utilities in the state and, um, joint power cooperatives have done in terms of looking at alternative energy sources, uh, more earth-friendly energy sources, including wind and solar. Uh, I think the wind turbine proposal is feasible to do that on a large scale, just from preliminary feedback. I think if you, there's more research to be done on that, I think is the, is the bottom line. What more, uh, communities have been looking at are solar panels. So, uh, uh, that's in the works as well. That, of course, would have to be balanced with, um, the utilities purchase power contract with CIMECA and SIPCO. And then what we've also contemplated as well were additional utility offerings. These would require a public vote, including a natural gas utility and telecommunications. I, I don't know if you have any anecdotal or just general public feedback on telecommunications, if whether there's a real desire from the public to have that kind of utility. And you would have that desire, there's a lacking from what's available now. So a- any feedback that you have from your own experiences or from what the public maybe has as thoughts on that? It's laid out as a concept, it's a lot of adequate internet service.
Pat, do we have any, any of those, CIMECA, who have telecommunications now?
Uh, there are a couple. But, I don't know, to say that we're lacking internet service here would probably be, uh,
Is it an overstatement?
Yeah, it's probably not the case.
The only one I heard of, I think it's Lennox.
Yeah, Lennox knows, that's one.
They weren't really adopter of it.
They, yeah, they've got it for years, haven't they?
Yeah, eighteen plus.
The conversations I've had, a few conversations I've had with some of those people is that it certainly wasn't a boon tool, but if they do it again, they wouldn't.
I've heard a lot of that, too.
So...
It didn't make them the money that they thought, because they still gotta compete with MediaCom and such, like, you know, anybody else.
A lot of folks that do it are, are ones that don't have fiber offered in their community already from somebody else. If it's offered by somebody now, a lot of times it doesn't happen from the, at the municipal level. You gotta think about it from a public support proposal, too. Is there a grind from the public to push for this and to support it? If there's not, probably wouldn't go anywhere.
Yeah, we could go in and take over infrastructure that's there now, um, but not without a cost.
It's a big, big cost.
So it'd be the same process as doing a gas utility, you want, you, you have to buy it, and then you have to service it.
Well, you, you gotta, you gotta hire a bunch of people to operate it.
I've seen the condition, say, like CenturyLink? I've seen the condition of their lines in several places that it's horrible. It's old, it needs replaced, and that would be something we'd have to look at if we did something like that.
And there's the cell turnover and then what are you running out, the new additions? Fiber lines, I thought it was?
Yeah, you're right.
There's supposed to be.
Okay, so I thought they were running that, and I know-
They don't have them out yet, but I think they were going to, and they've been running up to the Imitad.
And I know Tenora Fiber is building out all around us, so you've got two, two telcos already putting a big presence around here. I don't think there's a lot of value when us trying to do that. Okay, well, I'll go back to the, to the first page. Uh, this, I think, is made of the, the proposal that's the most, most developed really of any of them. And it, it really, it relates to the speed cameras or the automated traffic enforcement cameras. Um, again, uh, kind of an outcome of the subcommittee meeting on, on different joint initiatives. And it's really a benefit that I think you have as a community by having a municipal utility. The fact that you can work on these things together, that you don't have to rely on a private company to be involved in these kinds of things. You have total local control on, on how this happens. So what, here's a, just a proposal to go over for the group. And, and it's really, what you've really seen, it, I'll just get down to IMF toward the bottom of the page. That's a listing of communities that currently have traffic cameras or are evaluating them. What you've really seen change is there are more modest, more smaller communities that have installed these systems more so than, than Des Moines. Des Moines, Sioux City, um, Cedar Rapids, those are some of the ones that are in the areas, principally Des Moines. Uh, they were involved early on, as if you found on 235, everybody's seen it. Uh, I had a meeting in northwest, northeast Iowa last night, and I went through Strawberry Point, they had one. You get a ticket there if you're one mile an hour over, that's a ticket.
Wow!
So, so that's a little hard to manage, so, um, but that's, that's our ordinance. I think they are, but, um, a lot of them have a, a trigger where if you're five over or above, then there's various grades. That's what their ordinance reads. So, so what it would involve is adopting the ordinance to approve this, uh, process, that ordinance would be prepared by the, by your city attorney. Um, I think what's proposed to make them, I think, most locally politically acceptable is to put them on the Interstate 80 bridge, point them down at the traffic on the interstate. So if you kind of carry that out, what that means, anybody that exits on your exit ramps, enters your exit ramps, wouldn't be part of the camera process. So hopefully that makes it less, people are gonna be less leery to stay away from Stewart, I think, with that approach. So just a concept to, to consider. Uh, the city of Leclerc is a good comparable community there on Interstate 80. Other than, if you look through the list, other than Des Moines, and you might be able to say Windsor, I guess a little bit too almost, they're not on the Interstate 80, though. But they are, you're the only community on 80 that would have a camera, to my knowledge.
I thought Leclerc isn't there?
Uh, other than Leclerc, yeah. So, it's under item D, that discusses the location. Some of the benefits are listed out there, reduced fire rate and mass activity in the interstate, decreased, decreased police need to be on the interstate, lessened damage to police vehicles, less patrol time needed for the interstate, um, coverage. And then there's a potential thing for enhanced monitoring of, of vehicles from that, from that system. What, what you, again, what I really emphasize is, is it's an opportunity for the council and the utility board to work together. If you were to do it, the proposal is with having a municipal electric utility, that the power that would service this area, if you have to run power to it, it could be solar, that could be maintained and provided by the, uh, utility employees. The triggering with that to help make it a joint proposal is that you would have shared revenue between the two, two bodies. How that's split exactly, of course, is up, is up to you.
Oh, we'd want it all.
Good start.
Good thought!
So, as an alternative to that, uh, proposal, of course, it's up to you how this gets carried out, if there is support for it, would be to split it eighty-five percent to the city, fifteen percent to the utilities. So if that should be carried out differently, certainly your, your decision as a, as a, I think, I'd look at this primarily as a council decision, because you primarily, the governing board, wrote this. Hopefully then you can have some consideration for how the utility board might be involved as well, so. Um, laid out the cities that have been, have these in place, Charles City on the, on the right side, Charles City and Keokuk are two that are evaluated in right now. This is simply from publicly available information. And, um, I guess I would just lay it out as a proposal and kind of, if you look at other items, there's the potential that this will change in the future from current legislative, from the legislative environment coming up, uh, next year. You guys wanna consider the term of the agreement? Not sure if the companies are standard on, uh, how long they would go for. Uh, how, how the funds would be approached in the ordinance. And then the next steps would be, if there's support for it, right, to, um, at the top of the second page, to consider which, which vendor you would proceed with. If there's support for it, um, which attorney you wanna have prepare the ordinance. There's a required notification that we need to go to the Department of Transportation. There would need to be a traffic study by the police department. And there may be some initial steps, but that's a pretty good start.
I got a question.
Sure.
So, this is not gonna cost the city or utilities anything, right?
Correct, the private company would do it.
Okay, so then why wouldn't the city get eighty percent and the utilities would only get fifteen percent? Why couldn't it be closer, like fifty-fifty, if nobody's putting any money in?
It very well could be. I think the, the ones that I've seen, they've really only go to a, to a city, so-
Kim, the, the police have got to check this out, every single one, they've got to look through and, okay, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, because our officers are the ones that are gonna be sitting, pushing the button to click yes or no, warning, whatever. So the city would have more officer time.
Okay.
Or administrative time.
Or adminis-, there you go, the administrative time.
Then I can understand that.
Sure.
And Chip, I got another question. In Marshalltown, it's strictly speed cameras, they are adding license plate reading cameras now, too, did I see? Where at?
Marshalltown.
Marshalltown, yeah, I read that, too. I think so, I, they're adding something, I know, I just-
I'm trying to see, Kim.
I thought the General Peck that we were looking at was license plates, speed, it was all of it. So if we had, like last night, when our phones were all going off because we had a handover, if that car would have went underneath our bridge within thirty seconds or whatever, whichever cop was on duty, they're getting a message saying, hey, this car just went underneath the bridge, or there's a stolen vehicle, they're getting a notification right away of those two things.
So that's probably more of a council, police department decision on which, uh, uh, which better to go with, right?
I think both of them that came here said they had that, they were both committed also.
And, and, but vendor wise, the other one, I think the cops actually had to be out there, which defeats the purpose.
Well, they, they could.
They could, but it's still-
Yes, they, they could have the handheld, they had a handheld, uh, and the theory behind that was, you know, now you have an officer actually doing the work, uh, whereas you just don't have a fixed camera. But they did offer the fixed cameras also, which you can do, so you didn't have to have anybody out there.
And Chip, they're already doing a study, the Armadillo's was put out, but some of them malfunctioned, I think they're still out there, recording in there.
Honestly, I think General Peck already did their study.
Okay.
I remember, right, I don't, I, I think when he came here to give us results, he had the studies were already done.
And he probably wouldn't release them until-
No, he, he gave us a few, didn't he give us a few?
I think they did, they did a study on the interstate.
Yeah, and he had them pointed, and it was like within, I don't know, a few hours.
There's quite a few.
Yeah.
Out there.
I, I know, I, I was part of getting older, but I think people drive like they're nuts, so I just-
I am afraid. They're all in that hurt.
I've been in that car with Brian Belvin. That hurts you. Just about five minutes.
Okay, you're ready.
You, you were with us, too.
Got their quarter, right?
Listen, two minutes?
Yeah. You know, I, and I agree with you, Chip, but you know, I said my cruise is seventy-three mile an hour on the interstate, and I am actually a road hazard.
So many people are going around me.
Going around me, honking at me because I'm not going fast enough. Brian?
Yeah. I don't know. Um, so if you looked at Leclerc, their numbers are public record, or any other town, to try to back end what the eighty-five fifteen would mean to you. So if Leclerc, they're in that, so that you get a, the city gets in that portion of it. Their, so you have their agreement attached in that clipped set of information. They, what their agreement, it's with, it's with GAZO, in this example, agreement on the- It's about on the, their sheet of paper. Um, under compensation, on the page two, uh, it says per citation fees. Uh, so we got thirty-five percent for the first three years, and then thirty-two percent for subsequent years. Uh, this is five years, so that means two years. So that's the split. They, the city got, their revenue was in the, rolled it with two million in the first year. So you'll see that revenue be the highest in the first year, and then it will tail down. Because people learn that the cameras are there, and that's the whole idea, it changes behavior first, be-
That, or they don't pay the ticket.
Or they don't pay the ticket. So the two million was in that revenue number, so the total was then two point seven ballpark. Collected. Right, okay, so if we got half of that, we'd be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ballpark. The utilities will-
A hundred and fifty on the city.
Right. And then it'll scale down from there. I didn't put anything right in, who, nobody knows what the revenue's gonna be, but that's a, it, you gotta remember, the interstate's busier up there, by Leclerc, so-
No, not that much busier in this year.
Sure, but, so I'm, wanna be cautious about saying, I got this much revenue. In total, it wouldn't be surprising to get between, you know, seven to nine hundred thousand. The cities and me too, and then that would be split. It could be a million, it could be six hundred thousand, so.
Could be more than zero.
It's more than zero. That's true.
And it's helping to slow people down.
That's right, that's right. Uh, the other, so the other material in some of the handout, uh, there's a, the city mayor, they had a, they had a nice amount of data on their website. This is their policy on the automated traffic enforcement, that's in the handout. And the things that aren't as fun to discuss, there's two proposed agreements. Um, so we're, we're getting, I think, put in a position as a firm to handle work more like you years. So if we're doing work that's non-financial related, so to handle local planning and financial modeling, we've started to charge a fee for that, so that's what's in the two agreements. If, for the city, it covers, of this, if you flick on the cities, the, there's the top right, it relates to, for the city, it relates to the TIP certification and urban renewal work. I've got the automated traffic enforcement under the city, because you would handle the ordinance. The city might be involved in the energy planning because, because of the utilities agreement with SIPCO, and then a summary report. And then the utilities includes work tasks associated with alternative energy, and then potentially additional utility offerings. So there, the, the compensation section lays out the proposed, they're not to exceed fees per each task. And I think you'll see that they're, when, when the city has traditionally had urban renewal planning, that sort of development agreements, there's been administrative. We haven't charged anything for that, that's all been your, Paul, excuse me, Dorsey Whitney. Um, these are in line with those rates. Um, so they're here for you tonight to review. I don't think the necessary law has to be approved tonight, but they're here to review and to answer any questions on it, so. Is there any reason to look at approving? If you want more time to look at it, really. Do you have any hesitation on it? I mean, this is the work that's already doing.
Absolutely not. I thought, I thought you'd, surprised he hasn't charged us for that, all that stuff up until now.
Absolutely.
Can I make a motion? I'll move to approve Chip's agreement. Go ahead and have Chip proceed with General Peck and have Rick draft an ordinance, just to keep this moving forward.
That looks fine. That all the content?
Is that all you need?
I-
A to move forward?
Yes. Do we need to approve the agreement?
That's what it said, A, to approve his agreement, two, to let him proceed with General Peck, and three, to, uh, proceed with having Steve Rick do an ordinance, just because he's more in the loop with these things.
I'll shoot by Renslow for another second. I'll second it. Second, my Kavoff, how do you vote, Dolly?
No.
Kavoff, yes. Morgan?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Can we just do the same motion?
Motion.
Yeah, motion. Okay. Um, utility board for this, this same motion, um, to approve, uh, this agreement. So, how do you vote, Brian? I need, I guess I need a motion for-
Yeah, no, I'm with you, um, this involves the framework, though, this isn't gonna go outside of the, the usage that you proposed. Did you, can the motion say what you proposed or something?
It's just about the framework, why you down?
Yeah, it's a little, I'm running around, frankly, I drive around the rest of town.
The motion is to move this proposal.
Yes.
And to submit to, you want Steve Rick to-
That's a good one.
Yes, at least.
I wanted to speak, but I'd like to draw the ordinance.
No, I know, I just didn't-
It was to accept the agreement.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't-
Approve that agreement.
Okay. Well, the agreement from him is the-
Yes.
The framework of how it was to work and structure. Is there negotiation that you guys would entertain to go higher than eighty-five fifty or fifteen?
I don't, it's, you can always say we could always-
Maybe the eighty-five is us and fifteen, I don't know.
No.
I'm just joking, that's fine, I just want to make sure that framework was in there.
The motion has three parts. First part is to approve the agreement with Chip. Second, to approve this proposal.
And, and the proposal.
Third, to submit it to Steve Rick.
And his proposal, his framework.
Yes, that's right, yes.
She's saying agreement as this.
Yes. And the proposal is-
Okay, all right.
And the Steve Rick together.
Okay. I'll make a motion, I'm sorry.
Do I hear your second?
I'll second.
How do you vote, Brian?
Yeah.
Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you very much, your work. Thank you.
The utility board's here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for two new votes, I love that.
Do you have an extra one? Can you give it to Josh?
Two, two more?
Just, no, just one to Josh. Thanks, Sean.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll start. Number three, Guthrie County EMS.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that, appreciate it, on the, uh, agenda. Uh, I know a couple weeks ago, we entertained a proposal from Guthrie County, um, that ultimately would have led to a STIRDS EMS coming under control with Guthrie County at some point in the future. We had to vote, uh, and, and I'm not sure why we had to vote. Uh, Guthrie County can go to any place and present this without us agreeing to it, you know? I just kind of felt it happened, after I voted yes for it, uh, I had a few citizens come up to me and ask me, why did I vote to give away our EMS service? And no matter what I told them, that we didn't vote to give away the EMS service, we voted to look at this proposal, they told me the same thing. You're basically saying you are okay, the STIRDS is in control of the EMS service. And, uh, I had to agree with them, you know? And, and my reluctance when we had that vote is, is based in experience, uh, with working with the county. Um, you know, we've had issues with the road out here. They have a ethanol plant that generates a lot of money, you know, and, and it seemed, and I don't know why this is, I don't think it's anything this council did or the council that's on before did, I don't know. But I don't know why that is, that cooperation isn't, isn't there to get, get stuff moving. And, and I'm not against working with them, uh, on any project. It's just that experience of having that is, you can come and give me a proposal, and it was a well-funded proposal, there's lots of documents and stuff, but, but once you give it away, it's gonna be gone. You're never gonna get it back. I was elected by the people with this town as steward to look out for STIRDS. I don't know if Kenny Van Landingham, or Jeff Power, or Jeff Pease, or your dad Jim, or anybody else that was on that EMS, started this with the intent that we just hand it over to somebody else to run. Now, I'm, I'm all for having emergency service- Now, I'm, I'm all for having emergency services being able to cover the whole county, but I don't think we need to do it at the expense of having service here in Stewart. That's why we have our police department. You know, we don't get rid of them and have to rely on the county to come down and police our city, we want them for emergency response. We want a fire department here for emergency response, and our EMS here for the same thing. Are there other alternatives? Probably, you know? Uh, I don't wanna get into that tonight, my main focus is that like I said, my allegiance is to the city of Stewart, the people that voted me in here. And as long as I'm on the city council, I will fight to keep that control of the EMS within Stewart. And I'd like I guess, I'd like to have a motion that we, I don't know how you do it, if you have to rescind the other motion or whatever, but just make it that any proposal that removes control of the EMS here in Stewart from Stewart will not be considered. I don't know what we have to do.
You gave, you gave a motion to ask him to give you a proposal. Last meeting, you can rescind that motion, or you can make a motion to not consider losing any control of the rescue area in the future. Even if there's a proposal, so you can choose.
But truly, I. Yeah, I might could hear something.
I'm confused because we, we told Mr. Arbor that we were, yeah, he can propose something, it doesn't mean that we're gonna go forward with it. We also told him, before we would even consider anything, he needed to meet with our fire board. In that we are the only department or the city in Guthrie County that has a situation where our ambulances are stationed inside our fire station. So they the county would have to figure something out, because those ambulances are in a fire station, not an EMS station. And no other, no other town has that, they're all separate. So they Mr. Arbor was supposed to meet with the fire board and let them meet and talk and whatever, and then we, we're gonna let them come to us and let us know what they thought, but I don't think I ever, for me, I would never ever give our services away. But if they wanna propose something, let them propose something, that doesn't mean we have to accept it.
Right, and, and, and I agree with that, I, I looked at it that they came to us with that proposal that said in five years, everything would move to the county, and they said, well, if we can't get support, then there's no reason of going forward with that, and we kinda, to me, that's why I was so hesitant on that vote. Personally, why we did it. But mainly, I think what I would like now is, I don't know whether, where all the council, I know where you stand, and I don't know where everybody else stands, but I'd like to make it clear that any proposal, they can still come to us with a proposal. But any proposal that has uh, control of Stewart EMS taken away from the city, that we would deny. Because if it came down to it and they instituted a levy for countywide, it's, it's just the same thing as what happens with the sheriff's now. You know, our levy, some of that money goes to pay the sheriff, we have our own levy for our city, so, city, please. Have a county EMS, you know? And, you know, who's to say we couldn't get other towns that wanted to come with us instead of going with maybe a county service that's thirty minutes wide, twenty-five minutes wide? I just wanna know that I would like us to be united that we're getting the same EMS services, say, in Stewart, under our control.
You also have to be careful that your rescue director is very involved and pushing very hard for this. So if this is something that we're gonna, that the council is gonna take a stand on and we're gonna say no, it has to be very clear to our department that we're not doing this and that their involvement needs to cease.
I, I, I fully agree.
But it, it has to be very clear.
Yeah. And that would have to be left out to HJ.
Yes.
To discuss with him, cause that. But again, like I said, you know, I don't mind hearing the proposal, but when I heard that, you know, and it was this, we're gonna, we're gonna make it in five years, I just I knew we weren't agreeing to that. But it, it was just, you know, I, I, I think I said it, I don't want them to go away and go to other towns and say, hey, Stewart's in agreement with this. And he said, no, we're not gonna do that, but in the same breath, he told us, well, all these other towns are in agreement with this. You know, so of course that's gonna happen, of course it's gonna happen. And I don't want that to be, I want, I wanna know that, you know, as long as I'm here, that EMS will be under our control.
I think the also thing you have to look at is, our county is kinda split in two. You, you're gonna get, in Guthrie County, you're either gonna get services from Stewart Rescue or you're gonna get services from Panora, because all those other towns are serviced by Panora. So of course they're in agreement, because that's what Panora wants. And so you're you're gonna have all of them agreeing to what the county wants, because the county and Panora, you know, you see what I'm saying, with, they're all serviced by Panora, all them towns, so they're gonna be in agreement. We're the only ones and we cover, you know, to the west, but.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, I, I, I don't wanna drag it out or get into like a proposal, but who's to say we couldn't get, you know, if all these towns have to decide who they wanna go with, which I guess I don't know why that would leave, you know, people you know, don't decide, well, I'm gonna go with the county, you know, they still, we still go to Menlo sometimes, don't we? You know, and probably Casey, I mean.
Casey, Casey is more ported there, but usually they page, they have Stewart ambulance page over there.
Right.
If their ambulance is tied up or running behind or whatever.
You know, and we could enter into agreements with them, you know, that's something that I kinda had thought was hopefully happening for a while. And, you know, if they, if, if the other towns, if other towns, you know, hate to be blunt, but if other towns wanna go to the countywide service and they wanna leave for it, and all we service is Stewart. So be it, you know, that's what our, I believe, want, they want to have that availability, knowing that somebody's gonna be there to take care of them, I think that's what Kenny Van Landingham had in in his mind when he started that, so.
I guess, uh, we will get in the minute to keep the services in town is number one before we even discuss the proposal. I think that's your intention, and I expect that, and we will make it clear in the minute that we will keep the services in town, even.
And under town control. So under town control is big thing, cause they said we would keep service in town, it would just be under Guthrie County.
Down control.
So, but under, under Stewart control, so, I don't know if you need a motion for that, or it just gonna go in the minutes, or, or what? But, uh, like I said, I had enough people approaching me about it.
Yeah.
We'll get into the minute exactly like. I just, real quick, with that whole conversation as a fire chief, I did not get along.
Can he come up?
Yeah. Just with the last conversation that was up here with, uh, already EMS director in the Guthrie County Public Health. As a fireman, I didn't get very warm and friendly feeling from that whole thing. And, uh, especially when I'm told one thing, two months, and then, um, later, the exact opposite is being told to you guys, so, um, and just kinda my two cents on it, real quick.
Thanks, Sean.
Come up. So, if you view this as like a school consolidation, so we went through that, so what did, what happened after a few years? Bond issue has mental loss for school, right? So if you pedal this down the road, are the towns north of us growing or are they declining?
Decline.
Decline, we're growing, we're not doing anything wrong. So what do they need? They need calls, assets, they need to exist, okay? Guess what, we're existing and they're not. Is Panora doing well, uh, from a financial perspective on the rescue unit, you guys know or not? Not, or what?
Uh, every single rescue in the state's losing money.
Okay, and so this ten-year trend has about a, a standard average of what, a hundred, a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's made at work, you guys are being worked. If they can't fix the road that they've ruined with the ethanol plant money, then how can you rely on people rescuing here? I mean, I agree with him, I'd kill it, maybe most gonna get rid of it, that's just me, I'm sorry. This town has its own rescue unit, doesn't need that. Take it up by the gangs, Brian.
Excellent. We'll get it, we'll get it to you.
If we need a motion, I'd, I'd make a motion to just not even consider. Do we, do we need to do that?
No, it's really, you gotta get a proposal, you know, and then you're gonna put in the anything, so you get.
But I'd like to know, I know, I know I've heard from Christina, but I'd like to know how other people feel. I think it's a whole council. If somebody, if somebody has the inclination that it wants to go there, if they want to go to the county, that it's gonna be good. And this, you know, I just, I would like to know that.
I don't, I don't see how the county thing will work out, I mean, I, I agree, we don't wanna lose control. I don't see, I mean, I guess when we decided to come up with a proposal, is there that minuscule chance that they'll come up with the greatest proposal in the world and say, you retain, you retain all control and we're gonna give you a million dollars on top and all this.
And the same composition I had with Brian before the meeting, I don't see it financially. But I hate to say that, because we need to see what he got proposed.
Sure.
But.
That's why I said, I mean, that's why.
I just told that to Brian before the meeting, and I'm glad he's bringing it up, you know, kinda.
Will they, I'm sure not.
I can't see it financially.
You know, and like I said, I'm not, not a, just looking at a proposal, but I just kinda wanna be sure that, you know, discuss it up here that, you know.
We can make a motion, we can make a motion to, uh, like we stated, to put it in the end. We'll keep the service in town controlled.
If we're gonna kill it, we have to make sure that our department heads know that we're killing it, and they cannot go to any other meetings.
Cause he's going on behalf of Stewart.
He is going on behalf of Stewart, and he stood up here with him on behalf of Stewart, him and, and is making these decisions for Stewart.
Real quick, you have two of your head department heads down there within that border, that talking area, and/or going, so the top two down there are currently serving.
Brian, did you have something again?
If you wanna look at a proposal, but you have no intention of entertaining it, then why look at a proposal when you don't have a reliable presenter? There's always that on, you can look at that, I'm just saying.
I'm perfectly fine killing it right now, but we just, it has to be made clear to our employees that it is done, and we're not looking at it, and do not go to any more meetings.
We're not looking at going to any countywide service.
This isn't something we have to do eventually, right, is it? I mean, this isn't like something that is going to be mandated eventually.
I think the worst case, we're gonna have to pay for it, right? If it passes.
We, we may not get the extra money, but I don't, to me, I don't understand how we wouldn't get the extra money, we get the money for fire, we get them like, we get that extra tax for fire.
But, so, look at it like how the, how the sheriff and our police are run, right? So you get levied from Guthrie County. Okay, part of that money goes to the sheriff, right, pays their salary, pays the deputies, right? But we levy here in town, and stop me if I say something wrong, because I've been known to do that. We levy in town for our own police, because we want that protection here. So it'd be the same thing with the county. We levy for our EMS service to keep it here, but the county will also levy the residents to pay for the countywide one. Okay? So those, those are places that, say, like some of the people up north that don't have it, if they didn't uh, have a twenty-eighty agreement with Panora or something to, to pay them to cover them, then they'd go to the county.
But I think they already do, I think.
I, I don't know.
The, the whole thing, it blows my mind, because you have all of these towns that are north that have agreements with Panora. And then you have us, so it's Panora and us, you don't have any other ambulance service.
I know.
And all of them pay Panora to come help them. So, I.
Well, I, you see, I don't know that, cause without it being an essential service and maybe you can help me, if it's not an essential service, they don't have to levy their citizens, it is now, but before, they didn't have to levy like we do here.
But I think the towns pay a fee to Panora.
Maybe they, they, I, I don't know, so those agreements, you know, maybe, they, they don't get as much money as they would from the county levy. You know, but at least they're keeping that control central where you're not having somebody that maybe doesn't necessarily represent the CC, well, you know what, that's not quite a good fit for your town. We're gonna move it here, we're gonna move it here, we're gonna move it here. And that's what I'm looking at, it says.
I, I think we're looking at it absolutely, I, I think just looking at it like you, just, I am always going that financially, I am not seeing it work, you know? I was, you and I agree on that, I think what I talked to Brian, how are you gonna make it work? I'm more excited about seeing that proposal to see how it works, because that would be beyond like, no.
So, real quick, I think, number one, it's kinda like how Menlo gave us money for a little while to cover them, and then finally just it's Stewart Rescue's territory. Uh, my biggest question to you guys would be, um, like the townships, so the fire department gets township money for coverage, right? I'm not sure the numbers that difference from township to township. Um, the way Governor Kim Reynolds did this is, she made an essential service to be enforced by the counties, I believe. So basically she just to make everyone happy. And my question to you guys, and it sounds like there's a lot of questions before you guys make a bunch of decisions to be answered, but if our Stewart Rescue's going to cover, um, any townships outside, are those township people are gonna get double taxed as well? Or are you just talking about the levy for in-town services? I mean, those are the questions that maybe the proposal will answer. And I'm with you a hundred percent, we need an ambulance in town just to protect our citizens that are in emergency services.
And that's where we'll notice, we'll notice that, but we're just kinda on the finance side. It's beyond me. I think for what Dolly said, it's beyond them. I talked to Brian, it's beyond them too. So I don't know, I'm wondering. Um, I hope I see that proposal soon as I will, to see maybe what people.
And, and that's, that's where I'm getting at, it's like do we, even wanna look at a proposal?
And that's a point, that's a.
Now that we've had more time to talk about it and we're not rushed in a larger meeting.
Right.
I mean, to me, I would rather just kill it now and and keep, and just to say, we're gonna keep our services here, we don't.
Right.
We don't need outside help.
We don't, we don't, I can say, so, I wouldn't make a motion to that effect.
Possibility.
Uh, that we're not going to continue into the discussions. For, I don't know, can't, not getting my words, so anybody trying to get there, so.
But make sure it's clear that all talking is stopped.
And, uh, that, uh, our director and whoever is informed that we're not going to pursue this.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Nathan second? Oh, Dolly.
Yes.
Kalvah.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ranzlo.
Yes.
Okay, four sports complex improvements, at this point, Jim has got four holes painted and the flag hole painted, and now we just have to wait for him to dig the holes, and hopefully the electrical guys can help him get the new holes up. And then Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the original committee members met to discuss improvements for the sports complex and the new park and the new housing development. These recommendations were presented to the city council. After reviewing the recommendation, the council voted to approve funding for the sports complex and the new park at the new housing development. The money was not designated to the Lava Park, the McDonald's Park, or the Boy Scout Park. The stump grinding at Lava Park needs to come from the parks budget, not the hundred and fifty thousand dollars designated for the sports complex and new park. I talked to Randy Coyle, John Swinburne, and Tim Young about this, and they agreed, and John said he didn't think the stumps grinding out there should have been taken out of this, but I said I didn't wanna see the ugly bushes sitting there for years with brand new trees.
So some of that hundred and fifty to potentially buy someone else, isn't there some wiggle room?
Well, we, we don't know, James, we have no idea how much everything's gonna cost.
We're talking about a thousand, one thousand forty-three dollars.
And why can't that come out of the park budget?
Because the park budget is so low, and these are, I don't, what I'm having a problem is, this hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't Mayor Cook, Randy Coyle, Tim Young, John Swinburne's money to spend. This was set out for park improvements.
Not, not park improvements, one park improvement, the new housing development.
Okay, and this sports complex that has had nothing done to it, the road is bad, and.
They are in pedaspol on the road.
It's still bad. It's still bad. It needs to be redone. I just, what I'm having a problem understanding is why everybody gets to decide what's gonna happen to the sports complex except for us. Like, everybody's like, oh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do the light poles, fine. Or we need bathrooms, but we're not talking about bathrooms. And now we're bickering over a thousand dollars, which is a park improvement.
Not, not with that park, not at the new park. This is the Lava Park.
It's all parks. The money for all parks.
No, no, it is not. It is not. It's designated for one park. And that's my problem. We have no idea what all this is gonna cost. I'm trying to get John Swinger to work with Rusty Snyder to see about grading. Found out the draining does not go anywhere. Jim put so many hundred down the line, can't forget where it's draining and now gotta get the grading done for more parking. We have no idea how this hundred and fifty thousand dollars could play out, the bathroom.
Where did this committee come from? I'm confused on how we formed a committee.
We did not form a committee.
Well, that's what it says, the committee.
I know, but we did not form a committee for this. This was, and that's when I saw that, I was like, the committee members, and I kind of had a question to, what committee is that? Can you elaborate on that? What, the three people that are on here, it says the committee members.
Well, and, and Jessica Wolf is on, there's a.
But, but I don't know what committee it is. What, what committee is it?
To, for improvements at the sports complex.
So.
I think it's more of a.
Just a group of people got together and.
And it, that's been going on for six years. We've been trying to get lights.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to be argumentative. I'm just trying to figure out. So I remember they came up here and, and asked for some money. I didn't know they had formed a committee, I guess, maybe.
Yeah, I didn't realize that the hundred and fifty was all at their discretion. I mean, we had a list of things that the ASH provided at our last meeting. And it said, this is about what it's gonna cost. This is, you know, what, what we've allocated that hundred and fifty for.
And this isn't just last meeting.
And the only thing that we've ever seen happen right, as of right now, are some light poles.
I mean, that's gonna be the problem. There's no time limit, there's no time.
There's no, and there's no sheet saying, these are the exact improvements that we're gonna do. This is how we're gonna get from point A to point B.
But there's no way.
It feels, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished. There's no timeline to say, these are the improvements we're making. This is how much they're gonna cost. This is when it's gonna happen. And this is how we're allocating the money. It's just, we have this money and we may spend it here and we may spend it there. We may do this or we may do that. That's the sheet I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But.
But this has been going on since two thousand twenty-two.
I know, we hear about it in every single meeting. And there's something on there. And I wish, I would just like to have something spit out saying, this is exactly what we're gonna do, not while we think we're gonna do this.
Yeah, that's.
Spit it out, have a time, time.
Do you want to have this, Christina? Because my problem is, I can't coordinate the city, the utilities, on the bathrooms, the lights or anything. I've been six years trying to get these poles over here and finally the poles are painted. We might get poles up. The next step is the drain go work at the bathroom. Jim's got to run water in it. I'm trying to work with Jim to coordinate this. I don't know who else is gonna step forward and do this.
Jim is two feet, Jim has, well, now has three.
There's three.
Pat's limited. I think people are doing what they can and.
But that's why I say, you say you want a timeline. I'm doing the best I can on this.
Okay, I think that who, see, the thing that we talked about, Matt, is that one side.
The thousand dollars. Cause I had no idea what everything's gonna cost.
You shot that. Man was passionate about keeping the fifty thousand, hundred fifty thousand. There. And we respect it. I, Christina is just trying to find what's going on and where we're headed. So can he compromise here somehow?
Yeah, the money can come out of, of that money like we voted on last month. I mean, we already voted on it. We already said this is where it's coming from. I, I don't know why we're revisiting it.
Okay, can we move on?
Yeah, as long as you raise the park budget from five thousand.
Okay, but, but here's the thing. Yeah, we can raise the park budget, but we also have the budget is a very sore subject with a lot of people because the police need new cameras. They need new, you know, stuff in their cars. The fire department's stuff needs stuff. Everybody needs stuff. And we have to be aware of how much we're increasing and what we're doing with it. We can't just say, okay, park needs more money, let's just give them more money. I mean, that's not how it works.
Good point. So we can, uh, this thousand dollar.
I, I, I would say that if we, if we just follow through on, on what we voted on. If the sports complex comes up a thousand thirty-five, fifty-three dollars short, I think we could probably find it and compromise at a later date. This is something, this is something that's, we know is, is it done? Was it, were they ground out at the park?
Yeah.
Okay, this is something that's done. Let's get it paid. We'll go along, we'll see what happens at the sports complex. You know, you got, I know you don't have a specific timeline, kind of ebbs and flows. But then we try to see where we are and if, if we need to replace that thousand dollars next summer sometime, then we could probably do it. I, I would think we could.
You need a, you need a proposal. I mean, it was good with that.
And this, the sheet that you gave us the last time, can we get that again? And then at the next council meeting, maybe we can hash out which things need to get done and we can start getting bids and we can start making decisions to move them forward.
Yes, and I think, uh, Jim talked to me today about it and he's moving on.
Yeah, I mean, and Jim, we can have it at the very beginning of the meeting so that we, Jim can sit up here and we can get a timeline.
Josh. I just have, uh, Mayor, you did mention about a new playground out there, right? So there's a lot of grants out there for that sort of stuff, but they take a long time. So as getting grants for the fire department's stuff, um, I would just recommend you get on those grants a little sooner rather than later. That way, and, and that could help your hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well, so.
I'm gonna put the Guthrie County Foundation grant with me, a big one to.
Do you guys, this movement proposal?
But, but, you know, I talked to you today, actually, we had five thousand dollars for the parks. We've added the McDonald's park, we've added the Boy Scout park.
Right, we also ordered. Well, everything costs more like Christine said. I think we're moving on very well. We compromised. And we're.
And did the park budget get an increase last, last year? When we named everybody an increase?
I see a little bit.
Did you look at maybe for the next budget?
Brian.
Just real quick, if there's items. If we could get that in writing or something so we can, because if they're being asked to or not being asked to, we don't know.
Well, they had bids for the electrical and that's when I jumped in and say, well, we're not gonna double pay you for your labor. So they knocked off three thousand dollars. That's just an estimate because we got four different poles at four different locations, so we don't know what it's gonna cost. And this is just all estimate. We have no idea. Just like Jim's trying to get figures on the Lava Park with the stainless steel toilets and everything else. But possibly it would cost to do the baseball and football. This, it's all this waiting and then trying to get bids and time for both the city utilities to work on these projects.
But I'm just asking, can, is, if this is a committee or a group or this, again, something that the two groups work together on?
Right.
To set a timetable and just tell them, hold on, either there's support on the board or the council to do that and do a timeline. You know, I'm just asking. And so if there's stuff that the board needs to consider that, um, to fit into the right process, then.
Right, okay.
Well, I guess we have a heavy ending.
Public, public forum. Andrew Kellenberg was gonna come here and talk about these two outbreaks of flu on chickens and I don't know what he was gonna, you just want to make the general public aware of it. And that's, I don't know, there's one in Guthrie and one for the other, and each really worried about it.
Eat, eat that pork.
Okay. Public forum, anybody have anything?